We've got the plan at El Dorado Homes to get you into a new home, the tax plan. Bring a new tax refund and we'll help you use it to get into the home of your dreams. We've got a beautiful selection of homes with hundreds of floor plans to choose from. You can use your refund as your down payment or use your land and save your refund to upgrade to all the extras. El Dorado Homes, 1724 Junction City Road.
Mr. Rogers says, "Look for the helpers. Can always find people who are helping." Thank you to all the first responders who put their lives in danger to help us when my brothers and sisters and mom and dad and grandpa and grandma need them.
Thank you, first responders.
This is what I signed up for as a first responder. I am constantly worried about being exposed to this virus and potentially bringing it back to my home and my family. I'm going to continue going to work day in and day out and providing help to those that need it.
We look out for the helpers because they look out for us.
Thank you, first responders!
Thank you, first responders!
Thank you, first responders!
Love you!
Be safe, look after yourself, and look after one another. Thanks.
Learn how you can help first responders in your community by texting BRAVE to 24365.
This is News Radio 1400 AM and 94.3 FM KELD, El Dorado. We interrupt our regular scheduled programming for this special broadcast. The El Dorado City Council is held every second Thursday of each month. This broadcast of the El Dorado City Council will be available as a podcast and will be posted online tomorrow at accessarcada.com. You can also view the live broadcast streaming on accessarcada.com right now. We now join the El Dorado City Council meeting.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome all of you for being here and thank you to the radio station for putting us on the air tonight. So, uh, Madam Clerk.
David Hurst.
Here.
Frank Cash.
Present.
Vance Williamson.
Here.
Judy Ward.
Here.
Willie McGee.
George Calloway.
Huh?
Buddy McAdams.
Here.
And Diane Hammond.
Here.
Okay, we have two things to take care of. Uh, you should have minutes to approve from the November 10th, 22 meeting and the January 19th, 23 meeting. Can we handle both of those with one motion?
I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
And David Hurst.
Aye.
Okay, now comes the fun part. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't do it from up here. So, somebody's going to have to let me through. If you hear last time, we had a firefighter. It's been 30 years working for the city of El Dorado. And that's my final task. Tonight, it would be great pleasure to present Henry Hemler as fire. Very few people make a career of 40 years. But Henry served as city attorney for 40 years. He has seen a world of bears, council members, and audience members over the years. And has said, "In recognition of 40 years of distinguished service, loyalty, and devotion to the city of El Dorado, 1983 through 2025." So, that's a milestone. Henry, thank you. Okay, we are at number six on our agenda. Is there any unfinished business that needs to come before the council? If not, we will move on to new business. First order is reappointments to the Historic District Commission. We have Linda Rathburn, Sarah Kaufman, and Diane Murphy to reappoint.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
And Vance Williamson.
Second on this list is a reappointment to Parks and Playgrounds Commission, Mr. Ken Gowdy.
Motion to approve.
I'll second. I think we have a motion in a second there. Madam Clerk.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
And Willie McGee.
Number three is the reappointment to the El Dorado Works Board, Mr. Andre Singleton.
Motion to approve.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
And finally, reappointment to the Library Commission, Ms. Phoebe Sellers.
I make a motion to reappoint Ms. Sellers.
Second. Madam Clerk.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
And Frank Cash.
Aye.
Okay, now moving forward, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Greg Downham to come forward from the El Dorado Works Board. I think, uh, he's going to be here for just a few minutes. We have, we have, uh, three items on the agenda.
First item on the agenda is a funding request to install public Wi-Fi across city parks and other public areas. The total estimated expenditures, $260,619.47 that would be funded out of the community, sorry, construction management and non-designated category of the El Dorado Works. Uh, the parks are areas too in which public Wi-Fi would be installed. Downtown, Recreation Complex, Madison Park, Melon Park, City Park, Old City Park. We'll give the parks that we include in that and there's additional cost for servers and electrical and taxes. I believe most of you have a copy of that in front of you. If there's any general questions, I'll be happy to try to entertain them if there're technical questions left. Would you give a next word?
Okay, would you recount, okay, downtown, Recreation Complex, Madison Park, where?
Melon Park, Central Park, Old City Park. I don't think I missed any of that. And as Vance told us, you know, part of the purpose here is really to put access to public Wi-Fi in areas that are potentially underserved, so all public areas. Also, the complex is going to be important because we have a lot of activity out of the complex, so people can have some connectivity to Wi-Fi. There's also mentioned during our discussion that, you know, some of the parks are close to the areas in which, you know, some students live and if they don't have Wi-Fi at home, they can go to City Park, essentially work on homework and things like that. And there's also probably create the aspect of this as well that, uh, it's a little silly thing.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
A motion. Throw it for us.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Moving on.
Second on the list is to repay the auditorium parking lot. I think everyone would agree it has much need. That would also come out of the construction management and non-designated category. Uh, the estimated cost of that's $237,000, which is split between $183,000 for the actual materials and about $54,000 for the installation cost. Uh, the city Public Works Department also did some of the prep work in advance of that. I don't know a lot of detail there, but if there's any questions or...
I have a question. Greg, is that going to entail the entire lot being redone, the whole parking lot?
Entire lot.
From part, that part, right?
Entire lot. And the idea is we could try to get this done in advance of, of the...
I make a motion to approve.
Is that asphalting or oil and peas or asphalt? It's asphalted, is that right, Robert? Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
I'll second. And a second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
And David Hurst.
Aye.
Okay.
Next.
The last item is, uh, the renewal of the contract with the Chamber of Commerce to provide economic development services to the city. I believe this would be the seventh or eighth year that we funded that. $45,000 request, we paid quarterly, so quarterly, that's $11,250. And you know that the Chamber serves as the one central point of contact for all economic development activities within the city to coordinate the state and federal agencies and also the local businesses to improve and move forward with development projects in the county. So, you can ask your approval on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
And Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Okay.
We have, uh, an ordinance dealing with rezoning next on the agenda.
Are you ready for a key read?
Uh, as ready as we're going to get.
All right. An ordinance rezoning property, whereas there's been a proposed change in the zoning classification of the property described in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance from classification C2 General Commercial to R1 Single Family Residential. And whereas the El Dorado Planning and Zoning Commission has approved the request, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of El Dorado that pursuant to Section 8.2 of Ordinance Number 1559, the El Dorado Zoning Ordinance, the property described in Exhibit A attached to this ordinance is hereby rezoned from classification C2 General Commercial to classification R1 Single Family Residential.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We need to put on the second. Well, this is an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if this is not something that's pressing, shouldn't we do the first reading tonight and then the next month pick up the second reading or is there something pressing on this?
No, and tell me necessarily that it was pressing, but it's been delayed for a while. Um, I would say, of course, it's up to y'all. You can do that or we can read it and suspend the rules and go ahead and do the second and third reading. There's just no emergency clause, it doesn't go into effect right away.
It's going to take 30 days.
Right.
It's all residential area, so I don't see a problem with it.
I mean, this is something that's needed to be done from prior problems we've had.
I'm going to put it on second reading.
Counsel, it's on the... But it is something that we need to get a chance to respond to. That's why.
Now, these are just individual people that live in that area that are trying to protect it as being a residential area and not having...
And they own the property.
Mm-hmm. They own, they own the property, they do now.
And just to help verify. Yeah.
They're the ones asking for it.
The property owners are the ones that took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission and had to go through their procedures of publishing notice and having a hearing there. I'm fine.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask that quick.
Well, I'll second Mr. Williamson's motion.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Aye.
I can move to the final passage.
Second. Willie McGee.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
And Vance Williamson.
And I believe that takes care of that. Uh, next item, next item is not an ordinance, it is a resolution. Let me, would you take care of reading that, sir?
A resolution waiving the requirements of competitive bidding, whereas from time to time it is necessary and in the best interest of the City of El Dorado to waive the requirements for, of competitive bidding. And whereas Arkansas Code annotated in Section 1458 303 B2B states that the City Council by resolution may waive the requirements of competitive bidding as provided in Arkansas Code annotated 1458 104, whereas Arkansas Code annotated 1458 104 11A provides that the City Council may purchase used or second-hand motor vehicles without soliciting bids. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of El Dorado, Arkansas, that the requirements of competitive bidding are hereby waived as to the purchase of a used 2021 Ford F-150 and 2021 Ford Expedition described in the attached Exhibit A from Carl Malone Chevrolet Toyota.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
David Hurst.
Aye.
And Willie McGee.
Okay. I believe I have gotten to the Entertainment District Special Hours Request. Ms. Brumley, Ms. Griffin.
So, we, uh, sent an email yesterday, um, requesting, um, some additional hours to the Entertainment District due to the Governor's Conference. Um, attached with that are a lot of events that we added extra and we, not me, us, for the City of El Dorado downtown businesses are going to the experience to have some live music off of day night. We have some talent Monday and Tuesday and those aren't typical Entertainment District hours. We were hoping to extend that for that Sunday and Monday today. Yeah, but today, uh, the city ordinance that we currently are operating under just allows for the Entertainment District to be active on Thursdays and Saturdays evening. And so, this is a good way to give more access to those Entertainment District roles to extend this way.
Basically, your objective is to open the door for more fans, right?
Right, right. To give up the, um, the visitors that are going to be here the entire El Dorado experience that they would normally get on weekends, but they're going to be here Sunday, Tuesday and Thursday. And the businesses are, uh, rolling out the red carpet and open, like Maryland's is going to open on Sunday and PJ's and Main Street Pizza and, um, Downstairs Pub have live music on Monday, which usually does not happen, so we would love for them to be able to experience all of that and that.
Well, Mr. Rushing, um, since this is an ordinance that we're going to be amending for a temporary position, do we just simply make a motion?
I think so.
Okay.
The ordinance establishes the district and, and then you, you by motion, I believe, can extend the timeframes and in fact, that's what the ordinance says, they make a request to the mayor and, and it can be approved.
Okay, well, I'm going to make a motion that we make an amendment to Ordinance Number 1875 and that we extend those days to include Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Wednesday.
I believe the language in the original ordinance allows just by decision of the council.
But don't we have to stipulate when?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just have to read that into the minutes, yes, ma'am.
But I don't think you have to amend the ordinance, just approval of the request. I think so. So, that's time for that.
Right. Yeah.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Aye.
Frank Cash.
Aye.
George Calloway.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Aye.
Buddy McAdams.
Aye.
Judy Ward.
Aye.
And Diane Hammond.
Thank you. Now, we have the final item on the agenda, the resolution for further condemnations of derelict properties. Mr. City Attorney. Yep, get you a drink, this is a good one.
Whereas there are numerous dwellings in the City of El Dorado that are public nuisances as location and owners being more particularly, particularly described as follows to it. Street address, 514 North Parkway. Owner, Marquez Ann Marie, 617 East Park Avenue, Ridge Hill, Missouri. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, and unsanitary. Street address, 1903 Rose Lawn. Owner, Woods Tim, Four Sugar Maple Court, Little Rock, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsanitary. Street address, 1300 North Martin Luther King Boulevard, Sneed, Irma, P.O. Box, 225 Hampton, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsanitary. Street address, 1605 Southwest Avenue. Owner, Smart Tanya Renee, 1711 West Main, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsanitary. Street address, 100110 North Gray. Owner, Robinson Morris, 708 Lawton Drive, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsanitary. Street address, 524 Carrington. Owner, Caralta Kelly, 800 West Pitt, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 1124 Highland. Owner, Minette Ed, Ed Uxore, 4946 Highbanks Road, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 902 South Washington. Owner, McManus Marion, 813 South Washington, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address, 508 West Beach. Owner, Gordon Levania, P.O. Box, 2102, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe. Street address, 1321 Blackard. Owner, Fraser Ophelia, 1321 Blackard. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address, 515 Kiner. Owner, Franklin John Oliver Charles, care of Jorninia Robiski, 30644 Trumpet Vine Lane, Murrieta, California. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 601 Nelson. Owner, Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, 500 Plano Parkway, Carlton, Texas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address, 1514 Rose Lawn. Owners, Daniels Ali May, care of Jeanette Thompson, 1313 North Gray, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsafe, and unsanitary. Street address, 1311 Rose Lawn. Owner, Bullock William Dale, 1329 North Rose Lawn, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, obnoxious, unsanitary. Street address, 717 Liberty. Owner, Barello John P., 715 Liberty, El Dorado, Arkansas. Dilapidated, obnoxious, and unsafe. Street address, 1021 Euclid. Owner, ACI Properties, 311 East Main, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe, unsanitary. Street address, 2636 North College. Owner, Mario Scott, 605 Rock Island, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 514 North Parkway. Owner, Maria Ann Marquez, 617 East Park Avenue, Ridge Hill, Missouri. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 323 West Cook. Owner, Rebecca Johnson, P.O. Box, 10832, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 715 West Cedar. Owner, Jeremy Johnson and Peter Miller, 757 Lucy Circle, Magnolia, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 622 West Wesson. Owner, Carolyn Jackson, 622 West Wesson, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 325 West Cook. Owner, Dana Gray, 329 Vineland Place Drive, Vine Grove, Kentucky. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Street address, 622 West Wesson. Owner, Carolyn Jackson, 622 West Wesson, El Dorado, Arkansas. Reason for removal, dilapidated, unsafe. Whereas Fire Marshal and Code Enforcement Division for the City of El Dorado, Arkansas have determined that the above listed dilapidated and vacant structures constitute a fire and health hazard and are unsafe due to abandonment or neglect, the structures are deemed detrimental to the health and safety of the citizens of the City of El Dorado. Said structures shall be declared nuisances and condemned by resolution of the City Council of the City of El Dorado, Arkansas, and then removed pursuant to Section 7-341, et cetera, of Code of Ordinances. Whereas the City of El Dorado has given 30 days' notice to the owners listed above and attempted to notify owners by certified mail addressed to the last known address in compliance with state law and city ordinances within which said nuisances are to be removed by having mailed a true copy of these correspondences and posting for 30 days on said property. For those houses with notices that have come back undeliverable, the structures may be removed immediately. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of El Dorado, Arkansas, that the houses at the addresses and locations mentioned herein above be and hereby are condemned and declared to be nuisances to the City of El Dorado, Arkansas, and authority to proceed to remove said nuisances is granted.
May I comment? Um, number one and number 18 are the same property and number 23 and 21 are the same property.
I make a motion to approve the resolution, striking the two double entries.
Second.
Item number 10, I just want to be clarified, I noticed that is in the ward in which I represent, and it says that the location to be torn down is 1321 Blackard and the sister lives at 1321. Is anybody living in that? What's the deal? Come, come forward, Mr. Craig. You're playing that to me because I need to understand that. Okay.
You said nobody's living in that office.
Okay.
And I think there's been a tree through that. Wow. Okay. How, how did you notify the people of the property that own the property? Uh, by, by certified mail. You had no other address other than what? No, sir, I have to go by what, just like when you were in office, we have to go by the legal, it's on file with the forehouse. That's all we have to go by. I see. But we're not, we're not tearing down any property that's being occupied, right? No, sir. The only time we ever done that is when we had water in. Yeah. I'm not talking about waters, I'm talking about... No, sir, they own, they have no water, electricity, or any way anybody could live
They have no water electricity or any way anybody could do that.
Well, we kind of have done that once before.
Yeah, we have.
Um, over there on Wausau, but can I ask a question while we got him up here?
Feel free.
On the last condemnation list, I had a young man call me that he was trying to contact somebody about one of the houses on the list. Uh, I can't think, I think it was the first house on the last, last week list and I tried to put him in touch with, uh, the code enforcement officer, they was having a hard time. It seemed like he wanted to bring the house up the code. Are we still doing that once we read the list?
If they want to, if they want to bring it up to current codes.
Right.
Yes, sir, they do.
Okay, and that's what I told...
So we'd have to give them a timeframe on it.
Right, that's what I told him. I just wanted to make sure that I went telling them that it's...
I met with the young man today and they're going to get started in ten, ten weeks.
Yeah, okay, that might be the guy I'm telling you about.
But I'm sure when we're happy if they want to bring them up.
I appreciate you.
Lot of times we'll pick them up seeing the price, I'm willing to call and rewire one and bring them up the code.
Yeah, but, but a lot of, a lot of the houses have sentimental value and people actually want to move back in them. So I'm just saying if they want to do it, they just contact you or the mayor or contact the rent community.
They can come to our office and be in San San.
Or Savannah, okay.
Be in San San and we'll go out and meet them.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
All right, pretty quick.
Madam Clerk?
Judy Ward.
Aye.
Willie McGee.
Ah.
David Hurst.
Aye.
Diane Hammond.
Aye.
George Callaway.
Ah.
Frank Hash.
Aye.
Vance Williamson.
Ah.
And Buddy McAdams.
Ah, okay. That brings us to the end of our agenda for tonight. Uh, number eight is other business and that is open for any council member that has something they want to bring forward. Yes, sir?
Uh, there was an item on the, uh, last month's agenda regarding Warner Brown South parking lot parcel. I'm not familiar with what. I know it was made, but what is the issue?
That has been tabled at this time.
I know it is, but what is the issue?
Uh, it has to do with some of the, with the transfer of any property that was taken on by the city from, uh, from the original landowners. So we've still got, uh, we've got some muddy water that we've got to wade through before we can get a, get a resolution to that, sir.
Does that have to do with the county purchasing the property?
It had to do with the use of, the future use of the property, sir. Uh, in the original transfer, uh, it had to be used for health or, or medical services and we're still trying to clean that up. It will come before you when we have clarity on that issue.
Well, we, it remained Warner Brown property until it ceased to be a medical facility. That's how the city got the ownership of it.
Well, I'm just falling back on the original language for the original ownership by the city. So we're still working on it and when we have a resolution, I will bring it forward. Anything else?
I got, like, two quick questions.
Okay.
Um, when we did the re-appointing on the commissioners, that was re-appointing, so did that mean those positions was available and they chose to read up or?
Yeah, um, the ones that were on there for tonight, had their terms had expired. Um, several of them were only finishing out the remainder of the previous person's term.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, when the positions, their terms, um, expire, the commissioners ask them if they like to serve again. If they do, they vote and recommend to the city council. But if they do not, then they will, um, have me advertised. And I do want to say, since you brought it up, and I've posted it in several different places, but we currently have an opening on the Eldorado Works Board, the Historic District Commission, um, the Parks and Playgrounds Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So if you have any questions, um, or if you'd like an application, contact the city clerk's office.
Hey, thank you for that. My other thought was about the housing, about the, about the housing that we took down. Now, we done this once before, then we had a lot of lots, the houses was tore down and then they growed up.
Okay.
Are we going to really have a plan?
Uh, yeah, yes, I addressed that when we first started this process several, several weeks, if not months ago. And my, my direction to the Public Services Department was, is when those houses were gone, the only thing that would be left would be enough dirt to grow grass. So that if we do have to have maintenance, and then we will be dealing with those according to the ordinances in place as far as getting them into, uh, into the hands of people that want to improve them. And, uh, of course, we have always asked the neighbor first if they're interested.
Right, I was going to throw that out there because we did in the past have some neighbors who helped the...
Uh, but we, we have a protocol in place that was voted on by this particular body two, three years ago, sir?
Yeah, even more than that, yeah.
But yes, we have, we have had in the past some issues about, you know, instructions on those properties and, uh, you know, the instruction was very clear that I want it grass ready. If we're going to do it, we're going to get it...
Thank you for that.
Okay, not a problem.
The city doesn't own the property simply by taking a structure down. You don't gain ownership of that.
Well, we'll end up owning most of them.
By what method?
Default typically because there's going to be a cost involved.
You sort of leaned against the property is what you do.
Yes, sir.
And then it goes up for a public sale.
Can I finish, please? And the last thing is that, um, Reverend Callaway and myself had come together with a date to have a community meeting for Ward Three residents at, uh, Thursday, on the twenty third at five thirty at the pavilion on Hillsborough. We asked some all, uh, Ward Three residents, please come and have a discussion on some of the issues that we got going on in Ward Three. Also, if you can make it up, we'd love to have you.
What time?
It's going to be...
What time of the day will that be?
Five thirty. And that's at the V O L, the building right behind St. James Baptist Church. The old American supply building. I bet you're about a town, won't you?
Have we answered that? Anybody, please come so we can have a, a good dialogue and answer questions. Well, I promise you, no question, it would be taken any kind of way. We just want to have this dialogue and make sure we understand the things we can need so when we come up here, we can request and make sure the citizens' issues get addressed.
You will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You can announce your, um, commission, board, council members.
Oh, excuse me, by the way, all the other owners are welcome to come. The whole city is wanting.
I left it on my desk.
No problem. I'm there, you're welcome.
But please just remember, we, we actually...
On your own water bottles.
Want the people who are three to be able to have a discussion and not take it with the emotions on the street. We want to have a real dialogue, a real, a real dialogue.
He'll be right back. He better grab something. He didn't leave us already.
While we're waiting for this, could Ms. Karen Hicks come up and tell us about the, the cleanup that's planned before the governor's conference because I don't think everyone in this room...
Yeah, so many guys.
Well, the date, the date and the time, that's all we need.
So there's a local organization that's basically just, we just get local churches and community involved to just do different service projects. Our second one will be February eighteenth. We're going to meet at ten AM at the Boys and Girls Club. Bring your work boots, bring your gloves. We're partnering with Build Radio Beautiful and we've got a list of stuff from Paul and we've spoke with Jay Gootmore and the Parks and Playgrounds Commission. And we are, hopefully we'll have a hundred and fifty, two hundred people and we're just going to send them out throughout the city with jobs to do. So we're going to focus on where we know that these, that our guests are going to see.
Okay, very good.
That's what I wanted you to announce, thank you.
Let's not forget Ward Three.
It's the one city group that cleaned up the Boys and Girls Club a few months ago.
Yeah, we did, over there.
And, uh, we're going to have a lot of boots on the ground the eighteenth. I do know that, I'm going to pitch this out there too. My granddaughter's, uh, campfire group will be out cleaning streets too as well because she's already asked, you know, she's twelve years old and already asked for my pickup truck to use. Uh, I'm not sure about that. Uh, I hope not. I've seen what she does. Okay, in light of the fact that there are several commissions in town that require, uh, a city council member to be on these commissions, I have a list here and, uh, these are the folks that I have heard back from and I'm spreading the appointments out and we'll start with, uh, Mr. Hurst is going to sit on the Airport Commission. Mr. Hash will sit on the Complex Commission. Uh, Mr. Williamson will be on the Airport Commission. Ms. Ward will continue to moderate the Eldorado Water Utility Public Works Board. Uh, I didn't hear back from you, sir.
I would love to, if it's okay, the chamber.
Okay, well, I'll be attending chamber meetings as well, sir. Uh, George Brother Bishop Callaway will sit on the Parks and Playground. Uh, Mr. McAdams will be on the A and P as well as Diane Hammond will be on the Advertising and Promotion. Uh, but the eighteenth will be a big day if you want to volunteer, yeah, show up. We're going to have streets to work with. Uh, our entryways will be worked on, so we're getting, we're getting ready for a really, really big weekend in Eldorado. Uh, folks, it's, we're, we're going to have four hundred plus visitors at the rate, and there are people still coming in for the governor's, uh, conference on tourism. Uh, it's, it's a big deal. It really is a big deal and there's been a committee working for a year on this, so, uh, I consider this one of those home run moments for our city, so we, we're going to spiff it up and then we're going to make every effort to keep spiffing up our city. We've got a beautiful community and we need to, to take care of it. So, uh, if, if there is nothing else to come before this body?
I'd like to do your...
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, and everybody knows you got your bill of detail. It's in your packet.
You've been listening to live coverage of the Eldorado City Council Meeting from Eldorado, Arkansas. The city council meets every second Thursday of each month. That concludes tonight's broadcast. If you missed any of the meeting, you can listen online to the broadcast of the entire meeting tomorrow on accessarkla.com. This has been a service and production of New Walmart Broadcasting. Have a great night, Eldorado. We now return to our regular programming on fourteen hundred AM and ninety-four point three FM, K E L D, Eldorado.
You need to order today, though. Last year, they sold out before Valentine's Day. Here's what you do. Go to pajamagram.com, do it right now. Pajamagram.com, use code nude, N U D E, save twenty-five percent off your naturally nude pajamas. And, and again, when you do it, tell them Joe Pag sent you. Carrie, anything on that?
All I'm getting is that he's on paid leave.